Screen, yeah. Michael.
Okay, cool. Are you on your end? You see it?
Hi, Tony Kreech, how are you?
Hi.
Hi, Liz, by the way.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see my hair.
All right.
For the camera. High definition. This is my.
Oral public comments may only be provided live during the planning commission meeting in person. All comments provided should be limited to three minutes or less as determined by the chair. All public members will be limited to one comment per agenda item and one comment for non-agenda items. Members of the public may submit written comments by mail to planning department at milpitas.gov. It's time for the pledge of allegiance. May I request Mr. Galang, Commissioner Galang, to lead us? Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Galang. May I ask our recording secretary, Ms. Medina, to kindly take the roll call?
Thank you, Chair Gupta, and good evening, planning commissioners and community members. I will start attendance with Commissioner Kong.
Here.
Commissioner Wasti is absent. Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Present.
Commissioner Albana.
Present.
Commissioner Galang.
Present.
Vice Chair Calkins.
Here.
And Chair Gupta.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong?
None.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
None.
Commissioner Albana?
None.
Commissioner Galang?
None.
Vice Chair Calkins?
None.
And Chair Gupta?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you. I further ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from many of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from many of the development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong?
None.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
None.
Commissioner Albana?
None.
Commissioner Galang?
None.
Vice Chair Calkins?
None.
And Chair Gupta?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Let the record reflect no reported conflicts. Thank you very much.
Chair, I'd like to move for the approval of the agenda for tonight.
I'll second.
Was the second by Commissioner Galang? Yes, thank you. Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Calkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item will be approval of class. Number 12. Are there any comments? I have motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I second. Oh, I cannot, I have to be excused because I was absent.
I'll second that one.
Thank you. Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Galang?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Calkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Thank you.
There any announcements? Announcement, any from the planning director, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Chair Gupta. I do have a couple of announcements. The first one is that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission for March 12th will be canceled. And so that means that the next Planning Commission meeting will take place on March 26th, 7:00 PM at this location, same place. The other announcement that I have is the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, which is a project that the city initiated to overhaul our zoning ordinance, to streamline permitting standards, to modernize our zoning ordinance. And, yeah, that project, an important project for the city. It's the public review period is currently open. So we are accepting comments, and we would welcome comments from the community regarding feedback on this project. And the public comment period will close on March 7th, so just want to let everybody know. And the staff is also available to answer any questions, so please reach out to us. You can reach out to me and/or just the planning department with your comments on the public draft. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Public forum is the next topic. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less at the chair's discretion. When called to speak, you are encouraged to state your name for the record. As an item not listed on the agenda, no action will be taken. However, the Planning Commission may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. At this time, I would like to, before we start the public hearing, I'd like to thank the fellow commissioners for electing me as the chair for 2025. Also want to thank Commissioner Albana for her service as chair and Commissioner Ashby as vice chair in 2024.
Thank you, Chair. And congratulations also to both of you.
Thank you, thank you. Now we'll start the public hearing. As the next topic, the presentation will be made by the planning, by the planning department.
Sorry, Chair Gupta. Just to confirm for the record, did we have no public speaker cards for the public forum?
Thank you, Sir Deter and Creach. We do not have speaker cards for public forum. It's only for an agendized item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now the presentation can start for the housing opportunity districts.
Good evening, everybody. The first and only public hearing item for tonight is regarding the housing opportunity districts. And we have our principal planner, Lilian Van Hoa, here to give the presentation and also Chris Sensenig from Raimi and Associates for the presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee. My name is Lilian Van Hoa, principal planner with the City of Milpitas Planning Department. So tonight I am presenting on the housing opportunity districts. You can advance to the next slide, please. So the City of Milpitas is updating its zoning for the town center and neighborhood commercial mixed-use zones to foster the development of mixed-use neighborhoods. These zones referred to as the housing opportunity districts will remain centers of local retail businesses while also incorporating more housing and amenities. The updates implement the city's general plan vision and housing element objectives. Next slide, please. The City of Milpitas adopted its general plan 2040 in March 2021, outlining goals and policies for future development in the region. Subsequently, multiple state laws were introduced to promote the production and preservation of housing in California. In January 2023, the City of Milpitas also approved its sixth housing element, which includes programs and actions the cities will undertake to fulfill its regional housing growth obligations. The HOD project plays a critical role in implementing both the general plan and the housing element as well as ensuring the city conforms to recent state laws and regulations. The goals of the project include meeting current and future regional housing needs, incentivizing affordable housing, revitalizing aging shopping centers, streamlining approval processes in the, of housing projects, and implementing general plan policies. Next slide, please. So as previously mentioned, the city adopted the general plan in March 2021. And subsequently, multiple state laws were introduced to promote the production and preservation of housing in California. And following that, we also adopted the housing element in January 2023. Next slide, please. Currently, the general plan lays out the existing general framework for the town center and neighborhood commercial mixed-use land use designations. The town center provides for a variety of commercial, professional, civic, restaurants, hotels, residential, and entertainment uses. They can be wholly non-residential or mixed-use residential projects that integrate residential and non-residential uses vertically or horizontally. And currently, residential-only projects are not permitted in this area. And in the neighborhood commercial mixed-use designation, it is intended to accommodate a mix of commercial and residential uses with an emphasis on commercial activity. The NCMU designation encourages active neighborhood servant uses at the ground level. These are opportunities for vertical or horizontal mixed-use residential development to provide for area vibrancy. The intent of this designation is to encourage the redevelopment of aging commercial centers by allowing multifamily dwelling units. And specifically, in the general plan, Action L Use Dash 6B calls to monitor emerging trends in retail and other commercial uses, regularly engaging representatives of the business community and citizen leaders and update the zoning ordinance to help ensure the commercial centers remain competitive and successful. Next slide, please. So the HOD process implements general plan goals, which includes accommodating a well-balanced mixed land, mix of land uses that meets the diverse needs of Milpitas residents, businesses, and visitors with places to live, work, shop, be entertained, and culturally enriched. The project will also help support commercial centers that serve residential neighborhoods, and it will promote the continued evolution of Milpitas' job-generating land uses to support existing and future businesses. The HOD project will protect existing neighborhoods while directing new housing growth to targeted areas and revitalizing some of the older neighborhood-serving commercial areas such as the NCMU and TC Town Center. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the sixth cycle housing element adopted in January 2023 includes goals to maintain high-quality residential and mixed-use neighborhoods and to actively reduce barriers to new housing production. The current town center and NCMU designations were identified as constraints to new housing development, and the housing element includes an action item for the city to update its zoning to meet the city's housing goals. The city fell short in meeting its very low, low- and moderate-income housing targets in the fifth cycle, and the housing needs have almost doubled since then. The city needs to build more housing, especially affordable housing, to overcome its housing shortfall within the current general plan horizon. Next slide, please. As part of the overall community engagement efforts for the project, the city held stakeholder meetings with nonprofit and for-profit developers. And here are some of the key feedback that we heard on the slide in front of you. So we heard that greater heights and densities are needed to accommodate mixed use. Projects should be allowed flexibility in location of uses horizontally across multiple parcels. Parking requirements exceed market demand and hurt the feasibility of projects. Allow for creative ways to provide parking, including unbundling it. Anything that reduces fees and processing timelines will make the residential projects more feasible. And affordable projects have a hard time financing and implementing a mix of uses. Next slide, please. So following the Planning Commission hearing last April, staff held three additional community meetings to further discuss the project and address community concerns. The meetings were well-attended, with 45 people at the first meeting in May, 27 people at the second one in August, and 39 people at the third meeting in December. Community members had concerns about the project regarding the city's existing infrastructure, including potential traffic impacts to the city, particularly on and around Landis Avenue, parking, school district student capacity, potential building heights and privacy, affordable housing, and the potential for increase in crime, property values, fiscal impact to the city, and lack of health care. As a result of these meetings, staff has modified the proposed development standards within the HOD project as well as remove certain parcels from the HOD project area. Next slide, please. And before we dive deeper into the details of the HOD project, I wanted to talk more about some overarching themes that we heard from the community. So we heard from the community that there were concerns regarding the city's infrastructure, so I wanted to touch a little bit upon how public improvements and infrastructure projects are typically handled within the city. So annually, the city council approves a five-year capital improvement program, also known as the CIP. The CIP is a comprehensive planning tool for the construction, replacement, and repair of city infrastructure reflective of council priorities and policies to ensure that the needs of the livable community are appropriately and prudently met. Specifically, the document identifies priorities, schedules, estimated costs, funding sources, and financing methods necessary for delivering critical projects to the Milpitas community. So every project requires a funding source. So where does it come from? It comes from property taxes, sales taxes, permit fees, development impact fees, grants, TOT, transit-oriented, or transit, I'm blanking on the transient occupancy. It's taxes, yes. TOT taxes, AKA the hotel tax, gas tax, and Measure B, to name a few funding sources. Some examples of CIP projects that are funded by impact fees, like the TASP or Metro Area Impact Fee, are the South Milpitas Boulevard Extension, the Montague Pedestrian Overcrossings at Piper and Penitencia, a second Santa Clara Valley Water District, water reservoir and pump station, and the Metro Area Recycled Water Distribution. And additionally, when we collect traffic impact fees for projects, they're used to fund things like the Calaveras Boulevard Widening Project. So whenever a new development project is proposed within the city, staff drafts conditions of approvals for each of these projects. The conditions of approval includes things like payment of impact fees, and these range from stormwater fees, water connection fees, sewer connection fees, parkland, public art, and school district fees. And so these fees help, are used to fund the CIP. Next slide, please. And speaking of schools, we also heard from the community that school capacity was a concern. The city has actions and policies within the general plan related to working with the local school district in its development review process. The city meets with the MUSD demographer who forecasts the student population on an annual basis. The demographer shared that the elementary school enrollment in the Landis area can be managed with adequate school district impact fees. So that's typically a dollar amount that is paid per certain square footage by the developer to the school district. For high school needs, for every new residential project, the developers must meet with the MUSD superintendent to discuss additional mitigation outside of the impact fees, which is called for under General Plan Action UCS Dash 8D, which is on the slide in front of you. And additionally, we heard that access to health care was a concern. We have policy, general plan policy, CHW Three Dash Two, which says to support existing health care services and encourage the new location of new health care facilities and medical services providers in the city. So this policy helps guide staff as we are doing things like the comprehensive zoning update and looking at permitted uses across the city's different zoning districts. And should a private health care company choose to locate within the city, we could use this policy to help support them through the entitlement process. Next slide, please. And lastly, we also heard, why can't housing go elsewhere? First, the Housing Opportunity Districts project is a program or, and action item from the city's housing element. This program specifically helps the city implement its, its general plan. And there are specific goals and policies within the general plan that help guide every project, project that comes before the Planning Commission and City Council. We heard some feedback regarding converting industrial lands to residential. The general plan, as seen on the slide here too, has several policies that state that we should be preserving our industrial employment lands and prohibit incompatible uses like residential in these areas. Converting, converting industrial to residential would result in diminishing revenues and job creation opportunities and create a negative fiscal impact because residential tends to increase service costs to the city. Locating housing within industrial areas is also not advisable because there is a lack of existing infrastructure for things like water, stormwater capacity, and sewer in these areas. Within the housing element specifically, the housing sites inventory, which includes these, the sites that are proposed for rezoning as part of this project, identified sites most appropriate for housing based on proximity to amenities, services, transit, and other key factors. So locating housing in inappropriate areas will result in greater costs to the city to provide services and potentially negative impacts due to land use incompatibility. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to hand it over to Chris from Raimi and Associates, and he will walk you through the original proposal that you heard last April and then the changes that we have made since then.
Hello, good evening, and thank you, Lilian. It's a pleasure to be here to discuss the HOD project. I'm going to walk you through, as Lilian mentioned, how the HOD implements these goals.
So annually, the City Council approves a five-year capital improvement program, also known as the C I P. The C I P is a comprehensive planning tool for the construction, replacement, and repair of city infrastructure, reflective of council priorities and policies to ensure that the needs of the livable community are appropriately and prudently met. Specifically, the document identifies priorities, schedules, estimated costs, funding sources, and financing methods necessary for delivering critical projects to the Milpitas community. So every project requires a funding source. So where does it come from? It comes from property taxes, sales taxes, permit fees, development impact fees, grants, T O T transit-oriented, or transit, I'm blanking on the transient occupancy. It's taxes, yes, T O T taxes, AKA the hotel tax, gas tax, and Measure B, to name a few funding sources. Some examples of C I P projects that are funded by impact fees, like the TASP or Metro Area Impact Fee, are the South Milpitas Boulevard Extension, the Montague Pedestrian Overcrossings at Piper and Penitencia, a second Santa Clara Valley Water District, water reservoir and pump station, and the Metro Area Recycled Water Distribution. And additionally, when we collect traffic impact fees for projects, they're used to fund things like the Calaveras Boulevard Widening Project. So whenever a new development project is proposed within the city, staff drafts conditions of approvals for each of these projects. The conditions of approval includes things like payment of impact fees, and these range from stormwater fees, water connection fees, sewer connection fees, parkland, public art, and school district fees. And so these fees help, are used to fund the C I P. Next slide, please. And speaking of schools, we also heard from the community that school capacity was a concern. The city has actions and policies within the general plan related to working with the local school district in its development review process. The city meets with the M U S D demographer who forecasts the student population on an annual basis. The demographer shared that the elementary school enrollment in the Landis area can be managed with adequate school district impact fees. So that's typically a dollar amount that is paid per certain square footage by the developer to the school district. For high school needs, for every new residential project, the developers must meet with the M U S D superintendent to discuss additional mitigation outside of the impact fees, which is called for under General Plan Action UCS-8D, which is on the slide in front of you. And additionally, we heard that access to healthcare was a concern. We have policy, general plan policy, C H W three-two, which says to support existing healthcare services and encourage the new location of new healthcare facilities and medical services providers in the city. So this policy helps guide staff as we are doing things like the comprehensive zoning update and looking at permitted uses across the city's different zoning districts. And should a private healthcare company choose to locate within the city, we could use this policy to help support them through the entitlement process. Next slide, please. And lastly, we also heard, why can't housing go elsewhere? First, the Housing Opportunity Districts project is a program or, and action item from the city's housing element. This program specifically helps the city implement its, its general plan. And there are specific goals and policies within the general plan that help guide every project, project that comes before the planning commission and city council. We heard some feedback regarding converting industrial lands to residential. The general plan, as seen on the slide here too, has several policies that state that we should be preserving our industrial employment lands and prohibit incompatible uses like residential in these areas. Converting, converting industrial to residential would result in diminishing revenues and job creation opportunities and create a negative fiscal impact because residential tends to increase service costs to the city. Locating housing within industrial areas is also not advisable because there is a lack of existing infrastructure for things like water, stormwater capacity, and sewer in these areas. Within the housing element specifically, the housing sites inventory, which includes these, the sites that are proposed for rezoning as part of this project, identified sites most appropriate for housing based on proximity to amenities, services, transit, and other key factors. So locating housing in inappropriate areas will result in greater costs to the city to provide services and potentially negative impacts due to land use incompatibility. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to hand it over to Chris from Raimi and Associates, and he will walk you through the original proposal that you heard last April and then the changes that we have made since then.
Hello, good evening, and thank you, Lillian. It's a pleasure to be here to discuss the H O D project. I'm going to walk you through, as Lillian mentioned, how the H O D implements these goals and policies. Next slide, please. The neighborhood commercial mixed-use or N C M U designation covers much of the smaller aging shopping centers around the city. The map identifies three N C M U locations along Dixon Road in the north, Calaveras Boulevard in the center, and Landis Avenue in the south. The current general plan allows for up to a point seven-five F A R for non-residential space, which could accommodate a five-to-eight-story office building. Next slide. The planned recommendation would allow mixed-use buildings in these zones, while certain parcels will allow residential-only projects. This is in order to create N C M U zoning districts that allow mixed-use buildings with ground-floor commercial, allow for horizontal mixed-use through allowing residential-only developments on some parcels, allow financially feasible development types, and incentivize affordable housing. Next slide. The other land use designation in the H O D is the Town Center. The Town Center designation of the current general plan allows for forty dwelling units an acre and an F A R of up to point eight-five. The map on the right identifies the Town Center, which we sit within today, and it's really the heart of the city. Next slide. Like the N C M U, the goals and objectives for the Town Center are similar. It's to update the T C zoning to retain major successful shopping centers, allow mixed-use buildings with ground-floor commercial, allow for horizontal mixed-use through allowing residential-only developments on some parcels, and incentivize affordable housing. Next slide. So this is an example of how sites are categorized into the three distinct types of development and potential for redevelopment based on their size, location, current use, and future use. So we've divided each one into these three zoning districts. The parcels in the blue represent parcels with larger stores with surface parking lots that would become N C M U one. The pink parcels, or N C M U two, are smaller parcels that have prominent street frontages and which would allow a mix of development uses with ground-floor commercial. And then in each district, we've identified yellow parcels that are generally vacant or on secondary streets, ideal for residential-only development, that will really support a thriving retail district in each, each neighborhood. Next. In April, we came to you all with the following draft zoning recommendations. For N C M U, the maximum density was set at sixty-five dwelling units per acre, with building heights up to seventy-five feet and six stories. And here you can also see how N C M U one requires a twenty-five percent F A R for commercial. N C M two, N C M U two requires less, a ten percent. And then N C M U three allows for the hundred percent residential projects. And they also include a minimum density of thirty dwelling units per acre. Next slide. The T C draft zoning set the maximum density at fifty-five dwelling units per acre and a maximum height of seventy-five feet and six stories. For commercial, T C one requires thirty-five percent. T C two requires ten percent commercial, and then T C three allows for a hundred percent residential projects. Next slide. Along with the changes in densities and F A R, these zones also look at updating other standards to make mixed-use development more feasible in these areas. One of these is open space. The zones would require three-point-five acres of open space per thousand residents compared to the city overall of five per thousand. This would make the requirement consistent with other specific plan areas. Additionally, since many of these sites are much larger than in other parts of the city, developers on these larger sites would be required to provide five to ten percent of the site area as publicly accessible open spaces. Next slide. In addition to the zoning standards, the objective design standards adopted by the city in 2022 will also apply to all new multifamily and mixed-use buildings in the city. Next slide. The O D S is an important document because it also includes transition standards to R one and R two and R three zones. They include the following: greater setbacks to match the adjacent zone, upper floor step backs above forty feet, and a forty-five-degree daylight plane measured from ten feet above the property line. This is to ensure privacy and light narrow into the adjacent neighborhoods. And together, these standards and the zoning will ensure a smooth transition to lower-density neighborhoods, minimizing shadows, building mass, and bulk. Next slide. As Lillian mentioned earlier, the P C directed us to meet with the community and listen to their feedback. After a series of meetings with property owners and community members, we determined that we can try to address some of the feedback and suggest changes to the zoning standards and map designations. Next slide. The changes do the following: one, they lower height and density in N C M U areas. They increase densities in the Town Center. They remove two sites from the Landis N C M U area. And they make some clarifications in the standards that were not clear. On the right here, you see the main changes. In the N C M U, we reduced the maximum density from sixty-five to sixty dwelling units per acre, and we reduced the height by fifteen feet in one story to a max sixty feet and five stories. For the T C, you can see the main change here was really to increase density up to a density that is more aligned with the maximum height allowed and the type of buildings that we would expect in the Town Center. Next slide. After consultation with the property owners and understanding their longer-term plans, we also made some changes to some of the zoning designations, reducing the overall area, the T C one district, that requires that very high commercial rate. And, you know, these changes are, again, more in line with what we, the expected retail demand in the future, but also ensuring that the area remains a vibrant center of activity in Milpitas. And you can see highlighted in blue here the areas that changed from M C, or T C one to either T C three or T C two. Next. We are also recommending changing the general plan designation of the Public Storage in Bolero Site from N C M U to Commercial C two. This will remove these parcels from the N C M U, and they would not allow housing. Next. All right, you know, part of this is about creating affordable housing, and the, the general affordable, affordable housing strategy stays the same as it was when we, we were last year. And that's really to incentivize affordable housing by increasing housing production. With the A, the Affordable Housing Ordinance, the A H O, projects are required to develop fifteen percent of all units as affordable. So more housing in general equals more affordable housing. The standards also allow a hundred percent affordable projects through any of the zoning districts and does not require ground-floor retail for those projects. Okay, one of the things that have been brought up by the community over the past year is about what is the minimum amount of housing does the city need to allow and still meet the housing element requirements? I'm going to try to walk you through our, our thinking on that. So Program fifteen of the housing element outlines the goals for the Housing Opportunity Districts, meaning the T C and N C M U planning areas. It requires that the rezoning of the T C and N C M U areas foster the development for at least two hundred affordable housing units. We can't assume any one hundred percent affordable housing projects will be built within this area. So our calculations rely on the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which requires that fifteen percent of total units to be affordable. The H C D also requires a thirty percent buffer. So at a minimum, this project needs to identify at least one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three market-rate units that are likely to be developed. But only designing to that absolute minimum density is not prudent from a legal or policy standpoint. It does also not meet the city's goal to exceed the sixth cycle housing element and begin to prepare for the seventh cycle. Here is an, next slide. Here is an overview of our analysis where we have identified sites that we think are most likely to develop over the near-to-middle term based on existing use, conversations with property owners, and trending economic factors. With raising the T C density to the sixty-five dwelling units per acre and lowering the N C M U density to sixty dwelling units per acre, we have identified zoning standards that will ensure compliance with the housing element. Next slide. So in addition to developing the new zoning districts, the project does require updating the general plan land use designations to meet the housing element requirements and match the zoning. The new language outlines the new requirements and maximum densities. And here you can see the N C M U designation will now allow up to sixty dwelling units per acre. Next slide. And similarly here, the new language for the T W C that allows for up to sixty-five dwelling units an acre. Next slide. And so that is our report on the zoning recommendation. Again, the changes since last April and May is to lower the heightened density in the N C M U areas, increase density in the T C, and remove a few sites from the Landis and, and C M U area. And then also just some clarifications. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Lillian. Thank you.
So in summary, the Housing Opportunity Districts will implement general plan goals and policies, incentivize affordable housing, help meet current and future regional housing goals, support the revitalization of aging shopping centers, support existing and future neighborhood-serving retail and professional services, and create a net positive on city revenue. Next slide, please. A notice was placed in the Milpitas Post. Postcards were sent to all owners of affected properties and within a thousand feet of those properties. One new comment has been received to date and has been shared with the Planning Commission. Following last April's hearing, the city received a petition against the project in May. Staff responded to the petition via the project website in June. Three community meetings were held in May, August, and December of last year. And staff also met with community members individually to answer questions and concerns. Next slide, please. The Milpita City Council certified an environmental impact report for the general plan update in 2021. The E I R addressed the potential environmental effects of the planned build-out of Milpitas through the year 2040 and concluded that, that the implementation of the general plan would result in various levels of environmental impacts. Mitigation measures were incorporated into the E I R to reduce potential impacts from development under the general plan. And as part of this project, an addendum to the general plan, final E I R was prepared pursuant to Sequo Guidelines Section one-five-one-six-two and one-five-one-six-four to evaluate whether the project's environmental impacts are covered by and within the scope of the Milpitas General Plan Final E I R. The addendum evaluation details any changes in the project, changes in circumstances under which the project is undertaken, and/or if any new information of substantial importance that may cause one or more, more effects to environmental resources. The addendum substantiates and supports the city's determination that the H O D changes are within the scope of the general plan final E I R and do not require subsequent action under Sequo Guidelines Section one-five-one-six-two and adequately analyzes potential environmental impacts in conjunction with the F E I R. Further, a supplemental letter to the addendum was prepared and found that the proposed zoning changes that are being presented tonight and latest revisions would result in a reduced build-out compared to the addendum analysis. Therefore, this reduction ensures that impacts would be less significant than previously analyzed and similar to or reduce compared to the addendum conclusions. Next slide, please. So before I, I make this recommendation here, I wanted to note for the Planning Commission that the previous recommendation that the Planning Commission made last April could still be considered, should the commissioners want to pursue that as an option as well. You could present, you could recommend both recommendations to the City Council. You could pick one or the other. So for tonight, staff is recommending that we open the public hearing to receive comments, close the public hearing, and that they adopt Resolution number twenty-five dash zero-zero-four, recommending that the City Council approve General Plan Map and Text Amendment Number G P two-four dash zero-zero-zero-one to change the description of the Town Center and Neighborhood Commercial Mixed Use descriptions and change the land use designation of certain parcels. Approve a zoning map and text amendment Z A two-four dash zero-zero-zero-one to establish the Neighborhood Commercial Mixed Use N C M U one, two, three, sub-districts and sub-districts, and update the existing Town Center districts to establish the sub-districts T C one, two, and three. And that they adopt the Housing Opportunity District Addendum to the Milpitas General Plan 2040 F E I R and the supplemental letter to the addendum. So this concludes staff's presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I must say, you made excellent presentations. And also, I'm glad to know that you have taken into account all the feedback you received, or most of the feedback you received in various meetings that we, you had with the community. A lot of their comments and ideas you have taken into account. So that's, I think it's very nice, commendable. Nevertheless, we'll still have comments. And I'm sure commissioners will have comments. And then we have quite a few cards from, from the public, and they will have comments. So let's start with the comments from the commissioners. Does anybody have any comments?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a few comments. In fact, they are more like clarification. So I understood from the staff report that you guys have gotten an extension from the California Housing Development to extend this project because the timeline, the deadline has actually passed. So help me understand the legalities behind any specific dates that we need to get this done.
So the original grant that we applied for was technically through the end of 2024. And H C D, the, the State Housing and Community Development Department, they've allowed the city to have an extension with the caveat that the sooner that we finalize a project, and by finalize, they mean adopt the zoning regulations that go along with the project, the sooner that we will be able to be reimbursed for the work that we've already done to date.
Okay.
And so the longer the project takes, the less likely that the funding could be withheld.
Okay. And does that jeopardize the housing element certification in any way?
If we don't adopt this project in, in the way that we presented, yes, the, the state could decertify the city's housing element.
decertify the city's housing element.
And is there a specific timeline or date line to it? At which point do we become at risk if it doesn't get approved?
Good evening, Commissioner Kong. I could take a stab at that. So in one sense, I'll give one timeline. So with the sites inventory that we have, there's a list in our housing element update, actually an appendix that identifies all the housing sites, and that we estimated a certain number of housing units for those sites, and we use that to justify that we are providing enough units to meet our regional housing needs allocation, our share that was passed down through the state, then to MTC, the Regional Planning Agency, then to us. There are some sites that need to be rezoned to accommodate housing per the housing element. Because the city of Milpitas was a good actor in getting our housing element certified prior to the deadline, the HCD generally, HCD recognizes that and gives more time to make the zoning changes. So three years. However, that's for the sites, the housing sites inventory. But we also have a program, Program Number 15 in the Housing Element Update, that calls for allowing 200 affordable housing units. There isn't such a timeline for that. They could, I believe, come in at any moment and conclude that we are not adopting Program 15. So there's, there's like the housing sites inventory, but there's also just general compliance with the housing element.
Okay, thank you. And then since you're talking about the inventory and estimated number of units coming out from this HOD, you had mentioned that with these changes, it will reduce the total buildout? Is that my understanding that there?
It, I mean, there's, there's two kind of numbers. There's, you know, if every site redeveloped, right? But we would never expect every site. So we make a reasonable assumption on what sites may redevelop within the timeline of the general plan and the EIR. And it's, it might be a small reduction, but it's, it's about equal. It's not a huge reduction in the number.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I have a following question regarding the hotels. It is specified that there will not be any maximum floor-to-area ratio for hotels. So can you help us understand where these hotels may be built within this new zoning designation? And as what else might be constraining the maximum height for hotels if it's not going to be part of the specification before us today?
But they do need to follow all the other design standards. So the maximum height is applied to hotels. It's just, it doesn't apply the floor area ratio, largely because hotels often have a floor area ratio similar to a residential project. And the floor area ratio is a mechanism used to control commercial land uses. And so hotels kind of split in between that. But you're, you know, 0.35 or even 0.75 is, is too low for hotels. And that's why there's the, the exception to that commercial use from the FAR requirement.
Okay. And as far as the sites are concerned, which site hotel might be permitted?
I don't know off the top of my head in the land use table. It's a, in the, in the NCMUs, it is a conditional use, and then it is a permitted use within the town center.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add, even though it's a permitted use in the town center, if they are building a whole new building, which they will likely have to, then they still need to get a site development permit, which requires, which will likely require a least planning commission approval.
Thank you. And I do have a concern regarding parking. So it is specified that there will be a reduction in the number of parking spaces, even in the original plan. And I want to understand, especially with the affordable housing, we have had many projects come before us where parking is not required by state law, especially if it's near transit. How do we know if this location, especially Aldis, NCMU 123, as well as TCU 123, are any of these parcels, are they considered part of this near transit where they might get the exemption from requiring any parking?
So the city is not allowed to put a minimum parking requirement in the landus area because that is within the 29, or 2097, AB 2997. It's within that transit, high-service transit area. Now concerning parking, one of the things that we did hear from the stakeholders is that, you know, parking is expensive and that the, the current parking rates kind of exceed market demand in this type of product. So, you know, a parking space can cost, you know, anywhere from $40,000 to $80,000 to build. So the, the approach that we took in the Housing Opportunity Districts is to really let the market figure out what, what the parking need is. And so we set the minimum lower to allow more flexibility and, and thus incentivize construction of housing units.
Thank you. Last question I have is regarding the minimum that must be developed. So I was trying to understand the calculation. So in this cycle, in this housing element cycle that ends 2031, the projection is that you have to build at least 1733 units within any of these sites. Is that correct?
You don't need to build them, right? I mean, the only thing that the city can do is, is change the zoning. It can't force anybody to, to build housing. So I believe the word is to foster the development of 200 affordable housing units. So the, the way that we, we went about doing that is we looked at a number of factors to try to understand, like, again, this is all dependent on the economic cycle and the market. I mean, right now, you're not seeing much, you know, development of anything because of the interest rates and the construction costs. But in a favorable market, what sites are the most likely to redevelop in, in, you know, the next eight or so years, the, the housing element cycle? And so we identified those. And then we, we made an assumption that they would build out at the, the maximum density allowed. They may not, right? We, you know, we, we don't know. We can just set what the maximum is. And so from there, we feel we made a reasonable analysis that the adopting the HODs would foster the redevelopment of those 200 units.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I'll ask one question, and then we'll hear the public. So what is the impact of many apartment complexes already coming up in the city? You know, I mean, we approved, for example, on California Circle a couple of weeks ago. And there, there's 75 affordable housing units being built. So is that going to the same calculation or that's not counted in the housing that you want to make in this project, in this proposal?
We did not consider California Circle since it was kind of removed from the, the HOD project, Jay. Maybe you can...
So there are two sets of numbers here. There's the citywide RENA number, which is 6,713 units. So certainly, we want to count the California Circle since it's out of the NCMU. So any, any areas where redevelopment happens outside of the NCMU with housing, we can count that towards our RENA number, our total RENA number, 6713. But the number that we're really focusing on for this project because of Program 15 is the 200 affordable units. And then calculating how many units, and then 15% of that to get to 200, that's how we came, came up with a buffer, came up with 1,733. So they're two different units, two different numbers. But any project not in the NCMU, it will count towards our RENA allocation, our overall RENA allocation.
So was the RENA allocation based on some population growth in the city?
That's a great question. I was involved in the process. So every, every, I forget how many years, but by law, by state law, every region is required to have a regional plan. Ours in the Bay Area is called Plan Bay Area 2050. And in that process, a part of it is to come up with growth projections. So the regional agency identifies areas where you want to have, they call it priority development areas. They have priority conservation areas and priority production areas. They have all kinds of different designations. And at a regional level, they are trying to prioritize certain areas for growth. Based off of this and many other factors, that, that feeds into the RENA allocation that we are given. MTC A-BAG actually has a board, like a committee that is dedicated to coming up with a methodology that is deemed fair by all the jurisdictions. So they involve all the jurisdictions. We advocate, we write letters, and we push for numbers that we think are most fair and work best for the city. And that's something that the city of Milpitas did do. I think that there's, there are many different factors that go into this. It's partially the growth areas, how much land is available, equity considerations, how many amenities are in each area. And they use all of these factors to try to come up with a number. It's a complicated formula. I'll just stop there.
Okay, thank you. I think now we can... Now we can invite comments from the, from the public, right? Is that next step?
Yes, you can, you can open the public forum for this item.
So, so open the public forum. And just a second.
Chair, we have six speaker cards for this item at the moment. Is there any additional speaker cards that you'd like to bring up? I'll take it right now.
So keeping in view that we have quite a few people who want to speak, the normal three-minute limit, I'd like to reduce it to two minutes so that we get everybody's inputs and, and additional time for, for discussion after that. So can we start with the first?
Yes, Chair. Our first speaker is Shankar J. Push the button so it could, do you see it? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Ideally, I have liked my three minutes. I have a lot to say, but be it as it may be, I think this project is a damn shame, right? Let's call it what it is. It is just an atrocious plan. I've been in Milpitas for a long time. I invite all of you to come to Dixon Landing Road at 8:00 AM any morning and just stand there, okay? Traffic is gridlocked on North Milpitas and Dixon Landing Road. You just can't move. And to then go put dense housing in that area makes no sense to me. I don't understand how this passed in environmental study, right? In fact, the public notice that was sent out even had a deficiency. There was no link to the addendum. The other thing that amazes me is we say we had a lot of engagement. We had 45 people show up to a meeting. I had to skip two office meetings to be here, and I represent about 100 people in my neighborhood, okay? Two of them are here. Most of the people at Milpitas are trying to earn a living. They're working hard. They don't have time to show up for this. They trust all of you to make the right decision. We have, I think, about 60,000 people in Milpitas, right? 45 people is less than, what is it, 0.1%? How's that engagement? Like, how are we making decisions based on numbers like this, 200 YouTube views? People just don't have time for this. And it's just a crazy plan. Again, I just invite you all to come and step out there. I saved the best part for last. I got a call, I'm on a WhatsApp group where we are objecting to this. Someone called me that owns the land near Dixon Landing Road, offered me a half a million dollars, okay? And I'm actually in contact with the authorities so that I don't show up here and that I convince my neighbors not to object. Something stinks, right? Okay, thank you.
Next is Mr. Johnny Reed.
I want to thank you for having this Planning Commission meeting. Appreciate it. I've lived here since 89. I've had a condo, but I've worked here since 1976. And I'm over there close to the NCMU landus. And glad, and glad to come to some of the meetings where they've talked about, I, I live in a condo next door to this project, and if they were up at six, six stories, then all of a sudden, they'd be taking away my sunshine, you know? And I've been, had sunshine since I've been there in 89. They built these units in 71, 58 of them. And it's, it's a nice, nice area with, to live in Milpitas, but not to take over all your, your sunshine and everything. So they dropped, they did drop the building down a story, down to five stories. So that's, that's a plus. Really appreciate it. But the thing I didn't think about, too, it is a prospect, I mean, a thing, is, is parking. Once you put all these units in, oh God, the parking, and where are you going to find a place to park? It's going to be a mess. But we'll see how that goes down the road. I, I could say, I appreciate you having us here. I can't remember everything. I'm trying to take Prevagen to keep my mind going right now, getting older. But nice place, nice place to live, and I really appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amit Banjara.
Hello, and thank you for having us and taking some time to speak to us today and at least hearing our thoughts. I think the fact that you had to drop the time limit to two minutes tells you how much interest there is in this issue. So the best thing I can do is ask this council to help us with time. Give the community time to digest the news that we've just heard today. This is the first time we're seeing a lot of the changes. Thank you, Jay, and the team for at least thinking through some of the changes that you've made. Certainly welcome to see that, you know, you are willing to listen to dialogue and then look at the, the concerns. But there's still larger concerns, like you heard from him, you know, parking, schools, traffic. And one of the things we've constantly heard about is that all of those issues get discussed when a development gets proposed. We have all of this housing we've developed in Milpitas over the last 15 years. I have asked the team for data that tells us how this works, how has that impacted us as a city? How have we impacted traffic if we believe traffic gets better with these NCMU neighborhoods? We have high-quality city housing. How did it impact us? We have data. We have built housing. Milpitas has been pro-housing. I don't think anyone here says housing is not necessary, but at the same time, how do we make it so that people that live here get the best impact from it? When you talk about minimum units, if it's 200 minimum units you need for affordable housing, and that's helped you meet the state's requirements, why are we not proposing one site that can house only affordable housing units and develop that just for that? And you don't need to take over four or five sites and build these large buildings, quality of life, like he talked about. Two of the areas that we're proposing are right by the mountains. Anytime you drive into Milpitas, that's all you're going to see. So let's care about the residents that live here, that work here. Give us time to be able to digest this and have more dialogue. Give us time to be able to digest this and have more dialogue as opposed to pushing it for a vote for approval. Thank you.
Vidaya Ulal.
Respected Planning Department and members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to thank each of you for your valuable contributions to the city. And today, I'd like to especially thank the Planning Director, Jay Lee, and the Chief Planner, Lilian Van Yu, for patiently listening to our feedback and incorporating some of the feedback that we gave. And secondly, engaging in a very healthy dialogue with the property owners. They also diligently communicated to the citizens by email as well as snail mail, informing them of the public forum. So please do continue to engage with the citizens. Thank you.
Rigo Gallardo.
Good evening. My name is Rigo Gallardo. I'm a field rep for the NorCal Carpenters Union, Local 405. And as you review and discuss the housing opportunity districts in Milpitas, I urge you to consider an essential part of these future projects, the workers who will build them. Milpitas is a growing city, and with that, growth comes opportunity. But opportunity should not be limited to developers alone. It should extend to the people who live and work here. The apprentices who are training to become skilled tradespeople, the local workers who are raising their families here, and the young people who may not see college as their path but have the potential for great careers in trades. The students graduating from Milpitas High School deserve a pathway to great jobs with fair wages, benefits, and safe working conditions. That starts with the responsible development. We must ensure that developers building in Milpitas hire local workers and partner with the accredited apprenticeship programs. These programs provide hands-on training, helping to foster the next generation of construction professionals while keeping opportunities within our community. But this isn't just about job sites. It's about doing what's right for Milpitas. We must also protect workers from exploitation and unsafe working conditions by including strong labor standards on these future projects. No worker should have to choose between their safety and their livelihood. Commissioners, you have the power to shape the future of the city, not just through the buildings that rise, but through the people who build them. I urge you to prioritize labor standards, local hiring, and apprenticeship program opportunities. Let's make sure that Milpitas' growth benefits everyone, not just the select few. Thank you.
Vikas Gulati.
Hi. Thank you for giving me, allowing me the opportunity to address my concerns here. So I live off Dixon Landing Road, and I would be impacted by the land NCU project to the east of the Milpitas Boulevard. And I think my major concerns are related to the high-traffic density in the peak hours in the morning and the evenings there. And the height of the construction that's going to come up there, the problem with parking, school districts. And I already think that since there's a lot of new construction going around in Milpitas, we'll probably, I see that we'll be running short of open, open space and park space for the residents to enjoy. And given that these new plans are shrinking the ratio of open space to the number of residents, I see that as one of the major concerns. So these are my major issues that I would like to have addressed. The other thing is that with the particular notice that came out for today's meeting, I would have liked to see a link to the website so that I can directly access more information, which was missing in that notice. That's, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Ershad Rashid.
My name is Ershad Rashid, and I want to thank the commission and the staff members who have worked very hard to put this program forward. My, as a longtime resident in the Bay Area since '85, I have seen the transition of having affordable housing and having access to housing being a part of our community has been lost. The housing prices have gone up so much that the, when I was, in '85, when I was here, we used to see a lot of ancients and children in the neighborhood. Now we don't see them. So from my perspective, creating additional housing units in the areas where there are commercial and work opportunities is a good thing. And I have seen this plan develop over the last two, two and a half years and taking input from multiple community meetings and incorporating them is a good thing. Any delay would exacerbate the opportunity for the city to create additional housing units, especially in these areas where the buildings have been aged out. And creating a new vibrancy is a good thing for the community and for, for the residents here. Once again, thank you very much for doing all the work. And I do support the NCU plan that has been articulated here. Thank you.
And we have Ken Ketskies. I hope I said that correctly.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ken Ketskies. I am a lawyer that represents Chappelle Properties, the owner of the Bergeford Square Shopping Center and the Milpitas Town Center. I want to thank the city staff as well as, you know, the consultant here that we spoke with earlier. The listening process that the city is engaged in on this is much appreciated. And, you know, and, you know, I'm just very thankful for that. I have provided a letter to you folks with respect to some specific changes that we're looking for to the zoning ordinance that's before you. And a couple of these issues I want to highlight here while I'm standing here. The first one is with respect to building height. The EIR addendum already studied that maximum building height at 75 feet. And what we want to do is we want to encourage additional housing development. We want to do it within the density that's provided here. And we can do that if you guys make a small change and take away the six-stories requirement because it's still feasible to develop housing within that 75 feet at seven stories. So that's one comment. The second comment, and I won't go into a lot of detail here, is that there are some specific targeted changes that would facilitate the ability to achieve a greater housing, mixed-use development on these sites. And that's, again, the objective here with the city under the LEAP program and the STEEP grant. So we would ask that you consider the changes that we set forth in our letter. We think that they would stimulate housing development in the City of Milpitas and help you guys meet your RENA numbers. Thank you very much.
Shalin V. Varma.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come here and speak up. I've been living here for a long time. I'm in almost like 15 years, and I have seen a lot of changes here. I am not in support of building more housing. My daughter, she goes to Weller Elementary, and I see a lot of traffic in the morning. And I think the traffic is going to increase a lot. There'll be, parking will be a big issue if more housing comes in. So I'm not in favor of having more housing here. Thanks, thank you so much.
Padma Subharaya.
Good evening, respected council. I'm Padma Subharaya, and I've been a resident of the city since 2001. And as much as I love Milpitas, I love the parks, I love the county park, I love the access to the parks that my neighborhood provides. I cannot say that my quality of life has gotten better since when I moved in in 2001. The overcrowding of Milpitas is excruciating, be it grocery stores, be it roadways, the Calaveras artery, or the Montague Boulevard. So Montague Expressway. I live eight miles from my prior workplace. And what in any other parts would have, what sounds like an ideal distance to be living from a workplace, to me, it takes anywhere between 45 to 55 minutes, depending on how many traffic lights I hit on Montague and how many times I have to wait for the signals to turn. I live in the Landus Junction and I'm close to the hills. Just getting out of Milpitas takes me 25 to 35 minutes. I feel the only window where I can get out of my house and get back with some sanity is between 11 and 2. Unfortunately, I feel so pigeonholed. It is unbearable to even have the thought that you folks are considering adding additional housing to the Landus area, especially with no plans for parking. Please hear us out. The entire community there is opposed to the project. We do not want additional housing there. Thank you.
It's Nikun Valdya.
Good evening, respected sir and madam. First of all, thanks very much for giving us this opportunity to talk to you. And I, we really appreciate the team who have spent a significant amount of time explaining this project to us. We had attended the earlier meeting, so thanks to all of them. That being said, I am a resident in Milpitas for past 15 years. In Milpitas, we have been, we have been very happy out here with my family has grown up here. We live in Glenview Drive. On one side, we have Landus, and on one side, we have Calaveras. The only way that we can get to the freeway is either one of those. And right now, both the NCU structures are planned for both of those. We are, we are daily struggling to really just get to the freeways. And the freeways itself are really jammed. So really, the quality of life is a big concern for us with these two structures coming in on both the sides going to block us even more, make it worse. That being said, we, we, we want to kind of get to a place where first, one of the brightest pointers, when people come to visit us, our home, they see the backdrop of these mountains, and it looks beautiful. Unfortunately, now we have long stories, big-story buildings. I appreciate that the story has been reduced and our voices were heard. But I think still, it is not good enough for us. It will still impact the quality of life and the backdrop and the views that we enjoy. We would have really appreciated if there was a proposal to build a new park in Milpitas where we can actually have our families to kind of enjoy more of natural beauty rather than really more of housing. So really, I, we, we would really appreciate if you could really please consider our request. Again, I think very few of us have attended, and I represent a big community in that place. So thanks a lot for really giving us this opportunity. Thanks.
Vishal Gandhi.
Thank you, everyone. I just have one thing, I would just say that as a resident of the Milpitas, that as people have mentioned, that basically, when you talk about any of the NCU project, you aren't looking at it how the people are being impacted. Because the way I see it, I was just surprised. I would not say anything else. But the way I saw it, then when they made the changes to the NCU, then they came down to make the changes to Town Center. Now, when you are coming down to Town Center changes, there is a Kaiser right now, which is the only healthcare facility in the entire town of Milpitas. So now it seems that they want to remove that as part of redevelopment. That's the one thing. So I was like, wow, this is amazing done, work done by the city people. And then the second thing I heard is that I'm just surprised is that I only heard two planning commissioners having the questions. And I'm just surprised if any of those other ones are not staying in Milpitas or what. Because this is going to impact everybody, every one resident, including mayor, vice mayor, everybody who stays in Milpitas. Because there are only three exits that Milpitas people can take. And all of those three exits, we are planning to redevelop. So that's going to impact every resident. That's what I would just say that. Thank you.
Eileen Fears.
Yeah, my name is Eileen Fears. I am a retired professor from Cal Poly Urban Planning College, B&amp;V. And my family has lived here since 1957. And I can tell you that we've seen a lot of changes and we've seen a lot of bad decisions go on in the city to make it from one of the most beautiful pastoral places. We know things change, and we know they grow. But there are choices you make when you make these things grow. I've got a few things. Parking, one parking person per unit? Is that what I read in your plan? Do you understand that, one parking? Do you think these families, they live three or four families or generations in their homes? They have many, many cars. My neighbor has several cars. I can barely, I live on Calaveras Road. One's house down from Carnegie. And I can barely, at age 75, okay? I can barely get in and out of my driveway. I take my life in my hands. And the aggression of the drivers in that speedway we call Calaveras Road is absolutely unbelievable and unbearable. What am I going to do? And let me just say another thing I probably shouldn't say. Last time I came here, I was told three times in rather terms that were not exact, that developers could decide to take your land away and take your house away and develop that land if they want. They could do what they want to get what they need in the city. Now, I want to redo my house so I can live there as an old person. I need to, you know, make it livable for me till death. And what do I do? Do I think that, you know, what do you call it? eminent domain is going to take my house away? You're going to expand Calaveras Road? I mean, do I, do I not put my investment into my only living space? Okay? Okay, I know. There are too many other things. I can't lack, I cannot lose the sunlight that comes to my house. And when you put that six-story tall building there where the bank is at Calaveras Road, what is it anyway? HMO, whatever it is, BMO, that there's going to be no light coming to my house. We need that light. That light keeps us alive. It's for our health.
You can stop.
Okay.
Manali Tasi.
Thank you, everyone, for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, everyone, for giving us this opportunity and hearing us and allowing us to raise our concerns. I would like to, so I'm here to talk about NCMU Landis and raise the concern regarding safety because it is in very, the proposed development is in very close proximity to the school. So the concern is that by proposing this new development close to the school, it increased the traffic congestion during like drop off and pickup times and potentially creating the hazards for students walking or biking to the school, adding pressure on the existing parking spaces and potentially introducing unfamiliar individuals into the, close to the school proximity. So I would just like to throw the light on this concern here. Thank you so much.
Nathia P.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the committee today. I have, I'm not in favor of this proposal. Like I live in the area between the two, which is right in between the two NCMU's. And that this, both the, both the NCMU's on Landis and Calaveras will add, increase the traffic congestion in the area. It'll also impact all the schools in the area and increase and make the area more unsafe. That's, that's what I feel. I don't think, from what I've heard today, I did not, it wasn't clear to me how you propose to, to address the concerns about the school. The, address the concerns about the school and the traffic. There doesn't seem to be any plan to expand the roads. And all that, and it's also impacting all the existing commercial space that's in the area. And what, what I heard today also says that it can be used solely for residential based on the, and, and that, and I don't think there's any clear cut plan on, or anything. And I also feel that you need to take more input from the public regarding who's going to be affected by this, by the proposal. And also look at using, reusing some of the, the underutilized areas, other areas in Milpitas which are not really used. Instead of getting rid of areas that are, that have existing commercial complexes and a lot of facilities that are highly used by people living around the area. Thank you.
Vaibhav Shah.
Very good evening to the panel. I'm a longtime resident of Milpitas. Moved in 2013 and been very happy living here. With this new developments, I don't want to repeat every concern that other community members have raised. Just want to add that this is going to impact our lives in a negative way. And we want to, you know, ensure that you're hearing our voices. And I'm, I have complete faith in this committee that they'll take the right decision, which is good for the community. Thank you.
Chair, we have one last speaker card and it's Albert C. Zamora.
Good evening. It's been a long time since I've been up in this dais. My name is Albert Zamora, 29 years resident, retired deputy chief fire marshal, California registered professional civil engineer. Anyhow, I want to take a different take on this from the standpoint I want to address or at least recognize staff in particular. Having been in the position of adopting regulations in terms of the fire department and ordinances, I know and understand what planning staff has to do. So I duly would like to recognize Jay Lee, the principal planner, and Lilian Van Huwa with the great work that they've done. Because looking at the documents of what was put out is tremendous. In retrospect, if you compare to what we had in earlier 2000, it's night and day. So I think what we have to realize is that what we have here is a pathway and a guideline of how we need to build smartly as well as making sure that we have structure, organization, and cohesion. So again, I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the planning director, the principal planner, as well as Chris Freeman. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. This is probably the best audience we had in all of our planning sessions, at least since the time I've been here. I'd like to invite now, after everybody has heard, I mean, the commissioners have heard everybody. Are there any additional comments so that we can discuss? And maybe come up with some ideas which might, might help out.
It's to close the public hearing. So if there's additional factual information that you want to get through questioning, we should complete that questioning from commissioners. Once the factual information has been elicited, you can close the public hearing and then have discussion among the commission.
Okay, so I'd like to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
A second. Commissioner Kong.
Just for clarification, after we close the public hearing, can I still ask more questions to staff?
If it's to elicit factual information, that should happen before we close the public hearing.
Okay, so it'll be nay.
No, we are still allowed to make comments and, and.
We're still going to discuss.
You're still allowed to make comments. If there are questions that were going to be asked to staff to elicit factual information to be considered as part of the hearing record, then those facts should be listed before closing the public hearing. If, with that in mind, if there's a request to postpone the motion?
So are there any questions then? From, are there any questions from the presenters or the staff before we actually close the public hearing?
I do have follow-up questions for the staff.
Very quickly, if I may, a point of order. You do have a motion that's on the floor. You need an action if you're going to postpone the vote on that motion. You can do it either way. You can, someone can make a friendly amendment or a request to postpone the vote on the motion. And if there is agreement upon the council, you can do so.
I want to make a friendly amendment to the motion to postpone it after we get additional questions to the staff.
I'll second that.
Roll call on that or should we go ahead and ask questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the action. So was there, was there a? Postpone it a second, then you take a motion on that friendly request. You take a vote on that friendly request.
Okay, roll call please on this friendly request.
Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Holkins.
Aye.
And Chair Gupta. Thank you.
Chair, can I proceed with a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, can I get the principal, the planner and associate up? Thank you so much. We really heard a lot of feedbacks from the audience today. And many of them have very specific concerns regarding traffic. So I know during your presentation, you had covered some of the like school impact and healthcare impact and so on. But I don't recall anything specific with traffic mitigation. Do you mind maybe sharing with us if, after all the community engagement regarding traffic, has anything been done as far as consulting our traffic engineer from the city to understand what is the impact of this project?
So I believe that we have someone from our traffic engineer department on the line who can speak to, who can speak to how we analyze traffic at a project-by-project level as well as citywide.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Roberto Alonso, the Poly Works Division Manager, overseeing traffic and land development. You wanted to know how we would evaluate the, the traffic mitigations or traffic congestion for the projects. So typically for this type of development through the entitlement phase or through the planning department, there will be a traffic impact analysis that would have to be conducted to determine what kind of, you know, the use that's going to be, or the type of development that's going to come into these particular areas. And, you know, based on those, based on that analysis and based on that, those results, then we could try to implement some mitigation measures to try to improve the congestion or the, the traffic flow in the vicinity of the, of the proposed development. But, you know, we can't really implement something ahead of time until we know exactly what we're, you know, what the development is going to look like.
Is there anything that can be done proactively such as any engagement with Caltrans to widen the ramp onto the highway? Or, I mean, there are things that's going to be really long lead time to even do. So can we do anything proactively? Because these projects, as four sites does involve adding a lot of units. And I can definitely understand the concern from the residents here. And I share their concern because traffic in Milpitas today is already pretty congested. And if we are waiting for projects to come out to, before we start the analysis, that's going to hold us back from doing anything that has, that requires collaboration with Caltrans. Because a lot of the roads, especially with Calaveras, I would foresee that that's not just our own, our city-only solution. We'll probably need a lot of collaboration there.
Yes, yes, we could definitely reach out to Caltrans for, you know, the Calaveras Boulevard as to what they have any proposed projects in the future. Montague Expressway is owned by the county. So we would have to do some coordination with the county as well. And, you know, a lot of times, these types of improvements for, specifically for freeway interchanges, it takes, it takes a while for, for, you know, for either Caltrans or whomever they're partnering with to go through an evaluation of what can be done at these different interchanges. For example, right now, there's a proposed interchange improvement at 880, Highway 880 and Montague that, you know, City of Milpitas is working in partnership with VTA, City of San Jose, and Caltrans to, you know, get this project going. However, it's, you know, it's, it has, it still has to go through the alternative evaluation, environmental clearance. And, you know, once all, all those steps are finalized, there's still the funding aspect of these projects where, you know, be it City of Milpitas or City of San Jose or VTA or whomever the, the leading agency that's going to develop these, these interchanges or these improvements has to come up with, with the funding. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands of, hundreds of millions of dollars that would take to make these large-scale improvements at these interchanges, particularly for, you know, at the freeways.
Yeah, and that is a concern. I think with the fact that we have so much reliance on external agencies to mitigate our traffic issues, how, how are we going to be able to provide, I would say confidence, right, to the residents here that they are not going to be the victim of new projects?
Commissioner.
Asking for solutions, right? I mean, we're trying to be proactive here and what can you do, right, to give them the confidence?
If, if I may, I can speak to this topic. It's a very important topic. So usually, traffic impacts are analyzed through the California Environmental Quality Act, state law. Previously, the standard was level of service, which is what I think most of us are used to. Level of service measures the local traffic congestion. So when a project comes in, how vehicles are added or trips are added, we have ways to estimate that. And then it causes delays at intersections. That's our, the traditional view or traditional method of analyzing traffic. The state has completely changed that. I forgot what year exactly, but in the last few years. So we cannot use that metric anymore as a way of analyzing traffic per SEQA. They've changed it completely to vehicle miles traveled. It's very different than I think what we have all been used to as public officials. Vehicle miles traveled does not focus so much on local traffic congestion. It focuses on how much traveling is going on throughout the city and in the region. So in the state's eyes, now projects that would be allowed through the HODs, namely mixed use, higher density, infill development, near amenities, and near public transit, those are the projects now that are, per the state, deemed to have less impacts. And the projects that previously would locate away from busy areas so as to not impact the existing traffic, those are actually considered significant impacts now. So the state is, has completely changed the game on how we do traffic analysis. But that is the way that we have to do the analysis and consider the impacts at a programmatic level, because this is a plan. It doesn't propose any actual development. The city cannot force any sites or property owners to redevelop. This is a regulatory, like a zone. It's, it's land use planning. For those kinds of projects, the only way we can measure it to that level of the, or at that level is by vehicle miles traveled. However, as projects come in after this plan, if it does go through, these development projects, that's when we can look at impacts on a more granular, granular level. The city of Milpitas has chosen to continue to analyze SEQA through vehicle miles traveled, which we are required by state law. We have also chosen to continue to do level of service analysis. So that level of service analysis that analyzes impacts at intersections, that will happen for every project that comes in that is deemed large enough to trigger this requirement, which I believe is 100 trips. Roberto can correct me, but. And then at that point, we can ask or require, we can require any, whatever improvements are necessary that come out of this LOS study to supplement whatever mitigation that also comes out of the vehicle miles traveled, like analysis. But the mitigation measures are different. For vehicle miles traveled, you'll, mixed use is seen as a way to mitigate. Focus on better multimodal travel and other, other ways to travel is considered a mitigation. Under level of service, it's, it's a different set of improvements that Roberto probably knows more than I do about. So there, there is a holistic way to approach the analysis and to look ahead. It just may not be in the way that, you know, like we can't anticipate what projects are going to come in. We can't anticipate what kind of intersection improvements are necessary exactly. That may have to be analyzed a little bit later. But right now, we can analyze vehicle miles traveled. And this project per SEQA is deemed to be positive in that sense. And I understand this is new for a lot of people and very difficult to understand because it's not local traffic congestion anymore, but that is the state law now.
Thanks, thanks Jay for going into the details of what has changed and how the analysis is going to be done. I just wish that there is a little bit more concise way to, to get some of this planning, especially with traffic. need the expansion of the ramps and so on. So I don't know how we can resolve this if it's not under our jurisdiction, where this has to go to.
I want to add something. So don't we already have a local traffic congestion, as a lot of people pointed out? So instead of waiting for new projects, we can still do some of the things to mitigate the traffic congestion that we already have. For example, if you want to widen Calaveras Boulevard, that's in the plan, so that's one of those things we could possibly start earlier, because.
So the, I would defer to Roberto for more information, but Caltrans is already have, they have plans to widen Calaveras. We also actually have a Calaveras impact fee that we collect, and that is, that is how projects are funded. So we collect these impact fees and they are put into making transportation improvements. We also have our transit area development impact fee for any development that happens in the metro, near the bar station and the surrounding area. We collect fees and those can be used to fund capital improvement projects. So we are constantly implementing improvements from a traffic perspective, and we also do it on a project by project basis. So capital improvements program, we, it's city initiated, you know, we do that like regardless, and then as developments come in, then we get additional funding to make more traffic improvements. So that, so that is going on.
Okay, I have another, I have a question too. So is it true that when you say your goal was to have 200 units of housing for affordable housing, is that the main goal? If that goal is met, then you don't need to do all the other things we talked about? I mean, if we just meet that goal, that goal is easy to meet, as somebody suggested, an excellent idea, but is our goal beyond affordable housing of 200 units?
Also, I don't think it's as easy as it may seem, because to my knowledge, the city does not own any land in these NCMU areas. If we did own this land, we can put out an RFP and have a developer potentially, if anyone were interested, come in and develop 100% affordable project. We do not own any land, so the city cannot ensure that affordable housing will be developed in these areas. These are all privately owned, so this is our best estimate, best way to reasonably, you know, at least assume or estimate that we can get those 200 units. We have no other way other than purchasing land from a private property owner, and, and even then, we would be, you know, putting out a request for proposals and asking developers who are interested to redevelop 100% affordable project. If a developer decides to come in on one site and just develop 200 units, affordable units, and we had guarantees of that, yes, that would meet Program 15, but we, there's no way that the city can do that.
No, I understand the city cannot directly do that, but I think maybe, maybe there is a way for somebody out here to convince some builders to do 200 units, or 100 units at a time, or something can be done perhaps to minimize some of the other impact that people are talking about. So just a thought. I mean, I'm sure we have a builder here, I don't know, they're interested in 100% affordable housing, but there are many other builders in town who will be interested in that perhaps.
And also, there are some sites in these areas that are in our housing sites inventory, so we would have to rezone to allow for housing at these sites as well. So it's not just the 200, that maybe that's simplifying it too much, it's not just 200 affordable units in the NCMU areas, we have other policies, like throughout our general plan, our housing element, all these policies that we need to implement. And our, this also helps with our overall regional housing needs allocation as well. So we, thankfully, the city is in a decent place where, you know, with 6,713 units, it is a lot. That number more than doubled from our last cycle. That number will probably increase in the next eight years. So this plan is looking ahead, not just for this, even just for these next eight years, this plan is going to look for, at least for the next two cycles, and we do not know what that number could be. The city worked with MTC to get our RENA allocation numbers down. We worked really hard through the county and all the, you know, other jurisdictions in Santa Clara County to even get that number down. Originally, it was even higher. So just to kind of give you an idea of the, what we're dealing with, the next cycle may be even higher, and we have to plan for that as well. So we may end up having to come back and do the same exact thing again if we don't plan for enough units. So I wouldn't, yeah, I would say we still need to meet our RENA numbers, not just the 200 units, and it's 6,713 units.
Okay, yeah, thanks, yeah, that clarifies it. Any other questions?
Hey, so yeah, I do appreciate all the planning and stuff that's been going on, and I know you guys have been working on this for a long time, but just one more time for clarification, if we did say no and just said, nope, let's just scrap this, we've got enough housing in Milpitas. I don't know how many of you guys attended some of the HOD sessions we had, but Jake, can you clarify, or one of you guys to clarify, what happens if we don't at least put a plan in place?
I'll take a stab at summarizing, and I also will rely on my colleagues to add, but the, one of the major consequences of not planning for the housing units that we need to plan for is, as we mentioned earlier, if we don't implement our housing element update and the state realizes that, they can decertify our housing element. If they decertify our housing element, the city is then subject to builder's remedy. What that means is builders can essentially go into any of these areas and, and build what they want, and we have, the city has very little control over what goes in there. And actually, there are several cities in the Bay Area that are subject to builder's remedy, and there are many builder's remedies projects nearby, actually. So it's in the news, and it's, it's been a challenge for cities to deal with. So the consequences are worse, in our, in staff's opinion, to not adopting this project than adopting it.
Thanks, Jay. So I think I want to say feedback for community too, is not just to let the city staff know, because we, we all, all of us are residents here and feel the pain that we're all going through, but to let some of our other local elected politicians at a state level know what you're feeling with all this stuff.
Yeah, even there is such study analyses about the traffic, I don't believe in that. Once you build a 200 units, then there will cause a traffic. Even you have applying cars, but you still need the truck, you still need the parking, right? So why, why you still get built? Right now, every, every day, we have a traffic issues, Calaveras, Landes, or additional landing, every morning and every afternoon. We don't need this housing, this project in this Milpitas. Thank you.
All right, I had another question too, just regarding Kenneth from Chappelle, his concerns with this. I know when they submit a permit, you know, or look at doing a building, is there room at that time for, you know, the exceptions or allowances? Because like his proposal requesting, I think, instead of having 10-foot ceilings in some of the housing units having like nine foot or eight foot, you know, so they can add more stories to the 75-foot requirement? Is that something that would be allowed as an exception or a rule if a permit was submitted for that request?
So for this, the issues that Chappelle brought up, we can continue to dialogue and communicate and, and see what, you know, changes we could make, but these are relatively minor in the grand scheme of things. So that is possible. In terms of like exceptions, our zoning ordinance update will provide, well, we have a variance process which requires planning commissioner approval, but, yeah, and there's also, actually, and there's also state density bonus law, and if a project meets our, well, so there's state requirement for, if there's 10% affordable housing, then, or more, then you are eligible for state density bonus. So you can get a density bonus, but you can also request waivers and concessions from the city's regulations. That's one way for that to happen, and the city's affordable housing ordinance automatically requires 15% of the units to be set aside as for affordable. So any project that comes to the city that complies with our affordable housing ordinance will be eligible for state density bonus and waivers and concessions.
Okay, if there are no more questions, then we can close the public hearing.
I do have one question.
All right.
I still wanted to get back to the question regarding timeline. So I understand the risks, but do we have to do all of this together, the TWC and the NCMU, or can they be separated?
That's a good question, and we have also considered that question because of all the feedback that we've heard from the community, and we really did look at it. I think the challenge is if we do that, there is a much higher chance that we will not even approach the units that we have to provide. Also, if we do that, then we'd have to upzone further the other areas that we are keeping in these HODs. And from a policy and land use perspective, that may not be ideal for many reasons. So we, you could theoretically take one, like take an area out, for example, but it would put the burden on other areas, and if we don't do that, then I think we would be in a place where there's a very high chance we wouldn't be able to meet our housing element.
Jay, I think, Jay, I think in addition, there are housing element sites within the NCMU areas, correct?
Yes, there are some sites within the areas, and that would, we'd have to rezone those anyways within three years. But that, just resoning, only, only those sites will not resolve the issue that we have, like the Program 15 in particular.
So all of this has been done together? And in terms of timeline, I know one person has spoken about needing more time for this to reach out, to get to more residents, because there are so few of them who are aware of this today. What is the repercussions of making a decision one month from now being the next meeting?
I think the one concern that comes to mind is the grant funding, that we, it's reimbursement based, so if we do not do this within a certain amount of time, the state may decide not to provide the rest of that reimbursement, which they have told us. So that's one risk. Also, in terms of the timeline, I do understand it feels like this is going very quickly. And to be fair, there are some minor changes that not everybody has seen until recently, but the majority of the changes we've made have been available for a fairly long time now. We invited everyone from the three community meetings who attended on the email list to come meet and talk with us for the last few months, and only one group has done that. So I feel like there has been plenty of time to consider the changes. So I would just answer that way. Staff has put a lot of time and effort in delaying this project for about a year, almost a year, and also putting a lot of effort in making us ourselves as available as possible, sending multiple emails requesting that people meet with us, because we really do want to meet and have these conversations before this point. And I understand some people may not have known about this project until now, but we really tried our best. We, we used a lot of our noticing and outreach budget beyond any other project to try our best. And yes, the notice was not the only way that we did that. So we did a lot to try to do the outreach. We understand it's not perfect, but we're also limited by staff resources and funding. So I do think there has been enough time. But just to go back to the, the challenge of like delaying this further, yeah, I think we risked the additional funding, so we'd have to dip into some general fund to pay for this project, where otherwise, we have grant funding right there that HCD is willing to give us. Yeah.
And then I do have one final question for Chris. When you showed, when you shared the map regarding the more, the most probable parcel that's going to be developed, is that based on engagement with the property owner?
Not every site had engagement with the property owner. Some were, were based on existing land use, you know, some vacant parcels. We, we did meet with a number of the parcel owners that are there, so, and again, you know, that, that analysis is, you know, it's, it takes in many factors, and it's, what is most likely doesn't mean that it's, you know, necessarily going to develop in the next eight to 10 years or 20, right? It takes a lot of different factors, but we need to make a, a logical guess on the most likely sites to redevelop to understand how many, how much change is really possible votes for SEQA analysis and to understand how we may meet the housing element programs.
I would also add that I think our, our analysis of what are, what are likely sites to redevelop are actually quite optimistic, at least in the current market. Most of everything, most of what we've been hearing is that these densities and these heights are not penciling right now for developers. So if anything, I think we are being very optimistic, or, I don't, well, depending on what perspective you see it, we are estimating a lot more units than even what I think is actually likely, at least in the current market, and who knows how long that will last.
I think the one thing that I want to maybe help the residents understand is, will there be gatekeepers to make sure it doesn't get redeveloped all at once? That way, it just comes online and impacts everybody's life immediately? Or will there be ways to manage such that only a few would come online per year? I don't know how this, because this is market driven, I understand, and in the low market, we might not have anything, and then suddenly in the hot market, there might be five, six, seven apartment projects that come out. So what can we do from a city perspective to make sure that the number of developments or projects that come online in this HOD area can be managed in a sustainable way?
I could try to answer that question. I, I think we can't directly control what happens for private properties and sites. However, the environmental analysis with our, and then our analysis of what we thought were likely sites to redevelop estimated a certain number of units. It did not estimate every single site developing. So as, let's say, these areas start to develop, once enough development happens where you get to that number that was analyzed in SEQA, additional developments where that, where the, the number of units go above what was analyzed would require new and additional SEQA analysis. So in a way, there is some sort of a, a check on the development because of the SEQA analysis, which is what the law was intended to do.
Okay, thanks, Jay.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing now, so do we have motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hawkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Somebody raising the hand, I don't think we're allowed to, and add, add more, add more comments from the public, because. I don't think so, unless, no, it's not, it's not allowed, I'm sorry. So I think we still in for a discussion on this topic from, with the commissioners, and, and if not, I actually have a specific proposal regarding parking. Parking has been a big issue that has been brought up by everybody. And so currently, as you know, the HOD document specifies one parking space for each type of apartment. That was mentioned by somebody here, anyway. That means if there are 100 apartments, doesn't matter if they're two, three, four bedroom apartments, there's going to be only one parking. And that's obviously not sufficient, and perhaps, um, the zoning document actually give different numbers than this. But what I'd like to propose, maybe still something which is still on the low side, but at least maybe a little bit manageable, is that for studios should be one space, one bedroom, maybe 1.5 spaces, because assumption is that some people will have only one person living in one bedroom, and sometimes it'll be two people. Two bedroom, two spaces, three bedroom, two spaces, four bedroom, two spaces. So with that proposal, if we take a 100-unit building with the HOD document, it's 100 parking spots, with what I'm proposing, it'll be 185, even though you would argue that even that's on the low side. But perhaps to help in that number, we can also look at it, how many public parking spaces are available around that project? And if, if the builder can, can prove that the gap between what actually gets approved by, by, by the planning department and there is, and there is public parking around, and then perhaps that 185 number I mentioned or proposal I made can be adjusted accordingly. So, I mean, ideally, you don't want to rely on public parking, but in some areas, there is public parking, I mean, street parking available, like on California Circle is a good example, there's a lot of street parking, while around Great Mall, there's hardly any street parking. So, so depending on the location. So, so depending on the location, you can decide, adjust the requirements. And, and perhaps you choose the locations where there is more street parking and perhaps then it, the project might be more, more affordable. So I'd like to get some feedback from the other commissioners and then see if you agree with it or some alteration of that. We can actually take a vote and, and, and then based on that, we can make a recommendation to the city council accordingly.
One of the things I think, because on the notice, it talks about the NMC, NCMU and the TC areas, it's a minimum parking space. So that's, the minimum's already set in that regard. So we can add more depending on the proposals. I mean, that are brought forward, but that's it. I think that's a different issue than what we're trying to cover tonight.
No, the minimum, see, when you say minimum, that means the builder is going to grab that and, and go with it and the city will most likely approve it, right? So yeah, that, that was the idea. You're saying minimum, typically you end up there. And, and the idea, even there's zoning document, the numbers are different, right? Zoning document is close to, close to what I'm proposing. I don't know, any other?
Considering parking is always an issue and it's something that's talked about heavily, I do, I do like your suggestion.
I like your suggestion too, but I want to understand from the city attorney, how do we handle lenders? Because as Chris has mentioned, lenders is exempted, exempted because of state law.
I'm, I'm not sure if I understand the point that you're making when you say exempted under state law.
Lenders is within the transit. There's this law regarding how close proximity to transit.
To clarify, no, no standard the city can adopt will be contrary or override what state law says. The rules that apply to projects that qualify for density bonus permits and the reduced parking incentives and other waivers they are entitled to will apply regardless of whatever parking standard the commission chooses. Similarly, to other state laws, including those that relate to proximity to high transit and other kinds of rules that exempt from parking regulations, other kind of rules that are set by state law, those will always apply no matter what standards the planning commission adopts or the state council adopts. State law is, preempts local law.
Okay. So even if we're able to enact or tighten the parking restrictions, state law takes precedence always?
That's correct. I mean, there, there are circumstances under which we have local control. These rules have been held to be ones of state concern.
Okay. Thank you. Can we align it to the proposal from the comprehensive zoning ordinance? Because they also came back with a proposal of number of parking per unit size. Can we make that in alignment?
Okay. Yes, so the comprehensive zoning ordinance update is proposing very similar ratios. So if that were desired, it would be a matter of just changing the language to default to the citywide standards. Yeah, that's something that the planning commission can definitely recommend and we can pass it along to the city council for them to decide. And staff can consider, consider that recommendation as well, in our own recommendation.
Chair, I have a question. Attorney Creach, is it still possible to, I wanted to find out the economic impact this all has in this discussion about traffic? And can I maybe ask the economic and development Alexandrati to say something about this? What would it impact us economically and what is there?
So I believe economic development director Alexandrati is on and available.
Oh, super, super. Can we invite him, Liz?
Alex is logged on and he's, he's able to speak. Just, let's just wait on him.
Is Alex available?
I'm also concerned, of course, with the values of our properties. Of course, our dignity of our living in the city impacted by all the traffic or maybe parking. Of course, I like to have five cars and drive five cars and have parking for five cars. But that's just a joke. But then I want to see what the impact is and what Alex has to say if he has any thoughts on economic value.
Hi, Commissioner. I am not an economic development director, but we did have a fiscal impact analysis done. So I could share a very high level summary of the results of that fiscal impact analysis because that is a big concern for the city. With this project, we anticipate that if sites redevelop, there could be a minor loss in retail space. And that means less sales tax revenue, generally speaking. But we also anticipate more housing units and more property tax revenue as well. So we looked at, we looked at the city, we looked at these areas and we, we analyzed how much of an impact that this project would have. And for the city, we actually, we actually get a good amount of our revenue from property taxes as well. So it's, it's a, and for the retail, one, one other thing that, that we would look at is for the retail that remains or the new retail that comes in, what are the, what is the impact of having more potential customers at these retail spaces? So that if you have a mixed use development, you have housing units above retail. Usually, when you have more housing units near retail, it also benefits them from a revenue perspective. So although we anticipate losing some retail space, we would also expect that more of the retail would perform a little bit better. And then also with the property tax, positive property tax revenue impact, but also counting, considering the expenditures as well. The analysis came out to slightly positive.
I have a question. So these units, all the affordable housing units, are they, will they be rentals or are they for sale units?
It could be either. It is up to the developer, property owner.
So I just want to mention that the, the zoning document numbers are actually somewhat different than what I proposed. So, and we can, we can decide either way, but zoning document for one bedroom is only one space and I was proposing one and a half spaces. For two bedroom, the zoning document says one and a half spaces and I'm proposing two spaces. And, and beyond two, it's matching, you know, three bedroom is still two in both cases and so on. So the zoning document numbers will come out lower in terms of overall parking spaces, but it's still better than what proposed here. So I'm, I'm fine with either way, whatever we decide, whether we go with the zoning document, maybe for consistency or with what I'm proposing. But I think we need to at least improve what is being proposed here with the HOD. And then we can go to the, recommend to the city council and, and take the the street parking in view because that can mitigate in some cases. There are a lot of street parking available, then we don't have to be that strict with the builder.
And thank you, Chair Gupta, because I, I personally feel that to be consistent citywide would be better. Rather than hold them, hold this area to a higher standard, have it consistent with everything in the city. For sure is an improvement from what we have today. And that aside, I want to also make a suggestion. Can we recommend to city council to have a task force for traffic management in the city that involves community members to be part of that task force? Because we've been hearing a lot of, you know, concerns with, from not just this coming project, but even in the past projects, there's so many, so much concern from residents across Milpitas with traffic congestion. So can this be a recommendation that is attached to this project to recommend a traffic management task force that is community centered? I'm not sure if this is out of the line here, but just throwing a suggestion.
So I would say that it does go beyond the scope of the, the current proposal. You can, you can make non-programmatic recommendations. That is a communication of a comment to the city council. But if you were going to make that as part of your decision tonight, that is to tie it to this project, as I understand it, of saying, we believe the city council should consider this as part of our recommendation for this project, that action may be beyond the scope of what is presently agendized.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to then propose at least for, for parking, we go with the zoning document, even though it's lower standard than what I was proposing. But I'm willing to compromise. So let's, so let's have a motion maybe to see if we go with the zoning document in terms of parking along with consideration of the street parking or other parking available around the projects. And, and we can take a call on it and, and approve it and then recommend to the city council and it's up to the city council then to take a final decision. Do we have a motion to approve that? We're saying, do we have a motion to approve what I just, we, Kong and, Commissioner Kong and I proposed, which is to change the parking requirement, minimum parking requirements to the zoning document. So it's more than just one space per apartment, no matter what size the apartment is. And, and then taking into consideration the street parking to perhaps lower that. But so if we agree, then I, I think we should have majority vote, otherwise we cannot make a recommendation. So I, I, I move the motion to approve that proposal that we just made. And is there a second?
I need clarification. Is that motion specific to just adding the parking condition? Or is that proposal to approve everything, all the zoning ordinance?
No, I'm just talking about the parking.
Just adding the parking, parking condition? Okay.
Overall, with that separate motion will come later.
Chair, if I may, just to clarify procedurally. So the call of the question to the commission is as stated in the recommendation. The commission has the authority by, by motion to bifurcate the question. That is to take off certain parts of the question for consideration to reach a resolution on. Why I understand Commissioner Gupta is proposing is to bifurcate the question of parking with a proposal for, with, actually with a motion on that bifurcated question to, instead of the standards proposed in the recommendation, to adopt the standards that are, the citywide parking standards stated in the comprehensive zoning ordinance update phase two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Chair, if your recommendation, if I can vote no to this entire project, is that okay?
That's a separate motion that'll come later. That's your, your option. Okay, let's stick with the, the, the parking change motion that I moved. So is there a second?
I'll second that specific parking condition to citywide zoning ordinance.
Can we take a roll call? Liz?
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Nay. No.
Vice Chair Calkins?
Aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Thank you.
That carries only as a recommendation to the city council. Obviously, we don't make the final decision on that. All right, are there any other comments regarding this project? And otherwise, we can close and take, take, take a vote on whether we approve this. Do we have a motion then to approve the overall project? So, any comments in the meantime? No, okay. In, in that case, let me see, what's the next step here? I can just, we can just make a motion to approve the overall project?
If someone wanted to make a motion to adopt the recommendation as stated with the, with the amendment as stated.
Okay, is there, there a motion to approve the overall project with this amendment?
Through the drill. So, yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 25-004, recommending that city council approve the general plan map and the text amendment number GP 24-001 to change the description to the town center and neighborhood commercial mixed use NCMU and change the land use designation of certain parcels. Approve zoning map and text amendment number ZA 24-001 to establish the neighborhood commercial mixed use in CMU 1, 2, and 3 districts and sub-districts and to update the existing town center district to establish sub-districts TC 1, 2, and 3. And also number 3 to adopt the housing opportunity districts addendum to the Milpitas General Plan 2040, the FEIR schedule, number 2020 070348 and the supplemental letter to the addendum as well as the suggestion for adopting the zoning regulations for parking to make it consistent with everything.
And Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Calkins, if I'm, if I may, because the, this action comes after a prior action by the, by this commission, what I'd recommend for clarity of action on that motion would be to amend section 4 of the resolution at the very end of it to add the sense this recommendation is for approval is made for the city council's consideration the alternative to the planning commission's previous approval and recommendation for approval on April 24, 2024, which the planning commission reaffirms and continues to also approve and recommend.
All right, as City Attorney Creach said, make it so.
Mentioned the amendment that we just, just approved, right? Oh, you did, okay. I second. Can we take a roll, roll call, please?
Commissioner Kong?
I don't know if I can still make a friendly amendment.
No, it's to approve or not approve the
Okay.
The resolution.
I second.
So is, is Commissioner Kong, is what I'm understanding is that you wish to propose a friendly amendment prior to the taking of the vote?
Yeah. I, I don't know how to do this because I know Chris, Attorney Creach, you had mentioned that we cannot tie the traffic trap task force to this project. I really want to understand how we can at least communicate to city council. Even if it's not tied to this project, but at least have that as part of our resolution tonight. Not tied to the project, but a recommendation for the traffic test.
What I'd recommend is bring it up in the new business at the end.
Okay, new business, all right. So I will I will have to abstain for this vote.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Yeah, I abstain.
Vice Chair Calkins?
I think we're all on similar pages about this being a tough decision, but I'm going to say aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
I think we have
Four, we pass.
So it passes, goes to the city council. Now we come to the category of new business. Is there any new business?
Yeah, so I want to move back to the motion to recommend to city council the formation of a traffic management task force that involves the community to address traffic congestion.
Any comments from any of the commissioners about this friendly amendment?
I think it's a great idea and definitely with all the feedback we've gotten from the community with, you know, in traffic, parking, all those kind of issues. I'm almost surprised we haven't had some kind of task force like that in place already. So yeah, great suggestion.
Very good, thank you.
But don't we need to go beyond that? Don't we need the same kind of task force for, you know, impact on the school districts and impact on the health services of this proposal and all the other things that have been pointed out by the audience and the public? So it should be more than just the traffic management.
Then we can add, we can just expand it saying that with the community involvement and not only just in the traffic, then we just have to select the people representing schools, whatever.
I mean, why just traffic management? Because the issue is, it was beyond that, right?
Yeah, it's open to addition, right?
So do we, how will that be treated? Just as a suggestion to the city council? Do we have some kind of a task force?
So to clarify, because there is no item currently on the agenda for the commission, taking an action by the board is not something that you can do to take an action. If you wanted to make a statement, that is, it's essentially taken as a consensus vote, then that message can be conveyed to the city council from staff on behalf of the commission. It doesn't have the force and effect of law, obviously. It's not an official act of the commission. But if there is feedback that you are all providing by consensus, then staff duly takes that information to the council so they are aware of that feedback.
Is that okay? I think we can go with that. I think we'll go with the idea that it's a feedback from us to the city council to look at the broader picture and consider all the other impact that this kind of initiative will have, right? And then they can make a decision. To take a vote on that, right? Do we need to take a vote on that?
It would be a consensus vote. And I think there needs to be a little bit of a clarification to make sure that staff can adequately convey the message being proposed. So is the part of the planning commission is providing feedback to the city council to consider the formation of a task force to study impacts from housing development, including parking and traffic?
Parking and traffic and schools and health services. And what else was covered? I mean, the parks.
The schools, I know, are already included. You know, when there's permits and stuff submitted for that, I know the schools get involved.
Schools are actually quite well addressed already. I think, yeah, there is plan to do that. And the schools are already expanding and improving. So I'm not expecting much of an issue there. Yeah, so just for the task force, you can include everything, right? Because it's good to address all potential impact so that even the, it's also a challenge to the school district to see how, so that they can make plans to improve, add more schools and so on.
And the being part is, it has to be community-centered, because I hope that it's not going to be all just staff meeting together, but with community representative in that task force.
Yeah, if I may, just a point of clarification. So is this, are these impacts related to like any kind of housing development and growth? Or is it specific to the NCMU-related projects? Because if it is a citywide concern, we have various commissions and committees and task forces that kind of address different parts, aspects of what I think this commission is potentially looking for. So just a little bit of clarification on what the purpose would be and also if it's for all housing projects or just in the NCMU areas.
If I may, and it may be a little bit contrary, which is there are currently existing commissions and advisory bodies to the city council that address some aspects of this. Ultimately, the city council decides on what, if anything, they want to do with this feedback being proposed. You can provide it at a high level of detail and do want to be conscious of not having discussion beyond a certain point on an unagendized item. I understood that there is a desire for the city, for the planning commission to use its opportunity to speak as a body, to provide feedback to the city council. We could take a consensus vote on that. The proposal that I had heard on the floor was to provide feedback to the city council or consider the formation of a task force, including members of the community to study impacts from housing development, including parking, traffic, schools, health services, parks and open space and overall quality of life.
I think that's fine, but it should be, I think we're limiting it to this proposal, not every housing that comes in. Because this is being big housing in a big chunk, you know, 7,000-plus units over the next few years. It has a major impact on the infrastructure and everything else. So I think we are limiting this request to NCMU proposal, right? Does that make sense? Otherwise, commission is already there like this had and it may not really be then that appropriate. So I think we are focusing on this project. So do we, can take a quick consensus and go with that? Is that the right way or would?
Yes, that would work.
He has to make a motion and then second it?
It's not, it's not a motion. It's simply a consensus vote. If we have a consensus of the commission's statement that wants to provide this feedback to the city council, then staff can convey that.
So we can just take a roll call on that then? Without?
Yes, consensus.
For the consensus?
I will take a roll call for the consensus, starting with Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Calkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta? Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more items for new business, are there any other, any new items for business? Otherwise, I want to read this statement. It says, "Any person aggrieved by any final decision of any board, commission, or department head to the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within 12 calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced." Okay, with that, we'd like to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galang? Vice Chair Calkins?
Aye.
And Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Thank you.
The meeting is adjourned.